Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here to those in person and for those who are watching us live streaming. I will now ask the Board Secretary to take rule to establish a quorum for the record.
President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Present.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Otto?
Here.
And student member Aguilar?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you. And we will have our student representative from Poly, our Poly ASB president, Annette Guzman. And I would just like to add that that was my last name for my first 27 years. It's a little partial to that one, to lead us in the pledge.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you present in the room, the Board appreciates and supports community input at our meetings. During the meeting, there will be time for the public to comment on matters on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. For those who have not yet already submitted a request, we have provided forms here by where our Board Secretary is sitting. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The Board took action on the following items. Regarding item 3.1, confidential student matters pursuant to California Education Code 35146, the Board voted to expel a student ID number 9971 in compliance with Education Code Section 48900M. The student is recommended to be considered for a suspended expulsion with an opportunity to attend another school within the district. The student will not be eligible to apply for readmission until after June 15, 2024. The Board vote was 5-0. On item 3.2, the Board approved by a 5-0 vote the appointments of Nicole Kelly as acting principal at Bernie Elementary School and Lauren Bowman and Carrie DeLeon as acting administrative assistants in the Office of School Support Services. Now we're at the adoption of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? And how about our student representative with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we can formally introduce Annette Guzman from Poly. Annette, the microphone is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. First and foremost, I am honored to be speaking in front of you all today, and I'm thankful to be able to represent the student body of Long Beach Poly Technic High School. My name is Annette Guzman, and I am part of the CIC program, a very supportive academic program, and a former graduate of Franklin Middle School. I am currently the ASB president at Poly Technic High School, one of the largest and oldest, has one of the largest and oldest ASB in this amazing great district. I have been in ASB for five semesters. At Poly, as we know, ASB is the backbone of our campus. Some of the positions that I've held are Commissioner of CIC, Commissioner of Athletics, and right now, ASB president. ASB has helped me better my time management, public speaking, communication skills, and above all, be the leader that I know I can be. It has also helped me shape, it's shaped me as, it's helped me shape how I am today and the person that I am and that many people know I am. My fellow ASB members and I have built a very strong bond, and I am truly blessed to be a part of it. These bonds allowed me to strive in very difficult and stressful situations. To start off the school year, we have held one of the most popular events, the Homecoming Fair. The Homecoming Fair was headed by our Commissioner of Organization, Isaiah Ink, who had over 75 campus clubs participate in items ranging from brownies to quesadillas. Our Homecoming Fair helps display some of our amazing performances such as our dance group, which is Starstruck, and another club that we have, which is Pacific Islanders. We have over 100 clubs chartered with varying areas of interest. Poly, as you guys know, is very well-known for our athletics program, such as football. And our team had a great season, bringing 110% to every football game. Our student section also brings the spirit that is very hard to replicate. Just a few weeks ago, our student section against, when we played against Milliken, had amazing energy. Our Poly ASB loves to interact with other ASB. We had a mixer, which had an amazing turnout, which was organized by myself and ASB president from Wilson, Dylan Gomez. Though our Poly, though Poly is very well-known for our football program, we are also very well-known for other sports as well, such as the girls volleyball, who just shared more league title with Wilson, and our boys water polo team, who did very well this season and made it to CIF, and our girls cross-country team, who just won league. Breast Cancer Awareness Week was a complete success. We had special events to raise awareness throughout several days. We had dress-up days, and we passed out ribbons, and we had a big banner that was sent to a local organization where we can sign, and it was sent to a local organization that tries to bring awareness for breast cancer. We had a Great Dia de los Muertos, which was organized by our staff members on campus, and it resulted in students sharing items of loved ones in our campus and our very own ofrenda, which is located in our library foyer. November started with the celebration of our Student of the Quarter, which we honor student academic achievements, and had a breakfast and lunchtime rally, which was hosted by our Poly Pathway ambassadors. Our Pathway ambassadors did an amazing job in leading our campus representation for the Choice Fair, which was held at Cabrillo High School on November 4. Our Commissioner of Community Outreach, Riley Ignacio, recently just finished our annual Thanksgiving Drive, which all food and proceeds were donated to the Long Beach Rescue Mission to the families and those in need. This Friday, about 150 sophomores and seniors will be attending our very unique Poly North Camp, which is located in Big Bear. This is the 50th camp, with the camp starting in 1973. Our sophomores will be, will attend workshops, discuss sessions in cabin talks and seminar groups, and participate in countless outdoors activities. Our co-director, Mr. Shock and Mr. Puth, have been coordinating the efforts with the supports of our ASB event, staff support, members led by Ms. Natalia Lopez and Ms. Jackie Toyama. December is a very busy and exciting month for Poly. To start off the month, our campus clubs, the Poly Model United Nation, will be hosting a Buddy Model UN conference at our campus on December 2. This is to engage middle schoolers in the Model UN and help spread the concept to other schools. Next up, on December 4, we will be hosting our annual Boat Drive, partnered with Cedar Sinai. Then, moving on to more holiday festivities, we'll be hosting our annual Poly Movie Night, which will be screening Elf, and ASB will be selling food, snacks, and drinks, and so much more. December 16 is when we have our annual Holiday Project, which is also organized by our Commissioner of Community Outreach, Riley Ignacio. This Holiday Project is an event that involves communities in celebrating the holidays and creating a fun environment for our community. The Holiday Project is not just an ASB project either. It is a project of the students at Poly. Poly students donate different toys and volunteers in varieties of workshops so they can create a more memorable event for the community. Coming up on January, our 29th Annual Jack Rabbit Pageant is on January 19. It gives the opportunity to 10 of our seniors to showcase their talents, statues, while embarking on amazing journeys with the rest of the contestants to play a role in one of the most famous productions piece at Poly. They will have a chance to win many prizes and even scholarship money. This was just a snippet of the different events and activities that are going on at Long Beach Poly High School. I am grateful for your time, and a huge shout-out to our principal, Mr. Salas, for being here today and supporting us and our school as usual. Go Jack Rabbits!
That's a fabulous report, very comprehensive. Did you mention that you were a senior?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So can you tell us about your personal plans for next year?
Yeah, I plan to attend UCI and major in business. I do plan to open my own business, creating like a clothing brand, and my main goal is to try to give opportunities to students in Long Beach, a part-time job especially. We know that a lot of kids need it, so that's my main goal.
Well, we wish you well, and we know you're going to be successful.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think I also heard an idea to add to the over 100 clubs that already exist at Poly. And I have a name that comes right out of your presentation, From Brownies to Quesadillas. There's a name for that club right there.
I'm not going to oppose this, the suggestion involving food. I'm not going to oppose that at all. So what we'd like to do now is have a little break and do pictures, so if you'll join us up here?
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you, Annette. It's always wonderful to hear the students' perspective and what's happening on our school campuses, and that's always a joy. Ooh, let's see, what do we have? Our celebrations. So now we'll go to the video.
YBS, also Young Black Scholars, is a program that is meant to be an affinity space, but it's also meant to teach our entire community about Black and African-American culture.
YBS is good, that is, here is really a good program to have. Like, Ms. Smith went out, went out of her way to make this program for all of us so we can all feel welcome and have a community, because a lot of students don't hang out with each other, but as all like 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, they all can come together as a family and build a community altogether.
It honestly makes me excited to like, to see so many, so much Black excellence in one room, because when I was in 6th grade, I was new to middle school. I had just came here, and I did not see a lot of students that looked like me. It just makes me excited that we're helping the 6th graders here now feel part of a community, and I get to help them find their path.
All it would take for a program like this to be all over, LBUSD, is one principal that says yes. It's going to be scary, it's going to be rocky. People are going to feel like, oh, well, I'm being left out, and that's when you come in and you include everybody, because it's not about exclusionary, why not me? It's you come with me. Let's build this so that we have something for the next people.
Also, another fun way to see what's happening in the district. So I would encourage those principals to say yes. Okay, let's see, what's next on the agenda? Okay. We are now at public testimony, so we don't have, we don't have anybody who wants to speak on items on the agenda, so we will go to those wanting to speak on items not on the agenda. So comments on an item not listed for discussion must be about issues that are within the jurisdiction of the Board. And please note that due to California law, the Board cannot enter into a discussion. We may ask clarifying questions or provide clarification, but our discussion is limited. Each speaker will be provided up to three minutes for their comments, and we will have a total of 30 minutes to spend on public comment. So our first speaker will be Kellyanna Miller.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent Baker. I'm Kellyanna Miller, Administrator for CSEA Long Beach Chapter 2. Today, I stand before you to express my sincere gratitude for the district's recent commitment to participate in the Classified Summer, Classified School Employee Summer Assistance Program, CSAP, for the '24-'25 school year. Your acknowledgement of the program's importance and readiness to embrace it is a clear demonstration of the newfound dedication to the well-being of our classified employees. Thank you for recognizing the hard work, dedication, commitment, and perseverance of our membership in bringing CSAP to your attention. Know that your support is a meaningful way to acknowledge the daily contributions of classified workers and the impact that they have on our students and the school communities that they serve. The district's commitment to adopting CSAP not only honors their hard work, but also serves as a testament to the positive change achievable through communication and collaboration. As we look forward to LBUSD and the Board's formal adoption and implementation of CSAP, I once again extend my gratitude and heartfelt congratulations on this significant step forward in positively impacting the lives of your LBUSD stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ililani. And thank you for the pronunciation guide, very helpful.
I thought that would help. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Baker. My name is Ililani Fedestin, and I am a CSEA member and resident of Long Beach, residing in District 2. Last month, I had the honor of addressing this Board regarding the Classified School Employee Summer Assistance Program. It was and continues to be my desire for classified employees working at Long Beach Unified to benefit from the CSAP program, a program that has had a positive impact on my life. I would like to especially express my gratitude to my district representative, Board Member Eric Miller, who took the time to listen to the concerns and passionate pleas from Long Beach Chapter 2 members at one of our chapter meetings regarding the significance of adopting the CSAP program. Your attentive ear and public commitment to understanding classified needs are truly appreciated. I would like to express my appreciation to the district for expressing its intent to participate in the CSAP program for the '24-'24-'25 school year. I look forward to hearing the stories of how LBUSD classified employees have profoundly been impacted with the CSAP, just as mine is. I hope that the Board will join the district in its support and commitment to the CSAP program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Garcia.
Good evening. I'm Susan Garcia, a teacher at Coen Powell, and I'm also a resident of Long Beach City. I am here today speaking on behalf of the Teachers Association of Long Beach and as co-chair of TALB's Community Schools Task Force. The Teachers Association of Long Beach requests your assistance to help transform our higher-needs schools into community schools. It appears our efforts to work with the district to apply for California State Community Schools Implementation Grant have not started due to district delays. The grant is due on March 17, 2024. And with the holidays, we need to start work sooner than later. Please direct the district to work with TALB to prepare this grant. In addition, we are asking that you pass a Long Beach Board of Education Community Schools Resolution at your next Board meeting. Thank you, Board Member Eric Miller, for preparing the initial draft for the Community Schools Resolution. However, this item has stalled due to the district concerns, which we have not been informed as to what they are. TALB's Community Schools Task Force modified this resolution to include references to the California State Statute and language from the Community Schools Framework approved by the state in January of 2022. So we hope with these modifications that it will be easier and more palatable for the district to accept this language so that we can move forward on these community schools. Please act on this resolution at our next Board meeting. Community schools are an investment in the children's future and the future of our city and our country. They are defined in California State Statute as "public schools with strong and intentional community partnerships, ensuring pupil learning and whole child and family development." Community schools are viewed as equity-driven. They transform our schools by making stakeholders active participants and decision-makers on how the school is run. Joint decisions made by educators, students, families in the district, community organizations, and partners are reviewed and finalized by the Board of Education. California has funding for community schools, but we, TALB slash the district, need to jointly apply for this grant and not let it go to waste. Community schools are committed to asset-driven and strength-based practices, racially just and restorative school climates, and culturally proficient and relevant instruction.
Good evening, Board members and LBUSD staff. My name is Rosio Torres. I wear many hats, a school counselor, TALB executive board member, and a community leader. Today, I will be addressing you as a community leader. A community leader that has lived in my neighborhood and advocated for decades, since the age of 18, believe it or not. And as you heard from Susan Garcia, the previous speaker, Community Schools grant has a timeline and a due date of March 17, yes, March 17, 2024. Community schools are a vital component of an equity strategy. An equity strategy that we've all, we have an equity policy that I'm very proud of being a part of for two years, and we wrote it, and it came to board. So let's continue to do that with our community schools. Community schools create the conditions for students, families, communities to thrive by focusing attention, time, and resources on a shared vision. Only by truly collaborating together with students, families, excuse me, and community partners can we identify and meet the unique needs of every student. Sorry, I don't want to start coughing. The district talks about importance of sense of belonging. However, community members do not feel like they belong in our schools. Let's change the narrative with community schools. Our children will benefit from community schools. So don't delay, make the investment today in our community's future, in our children's future, in our city's future by transforming our higher-needed schools into genuine community schools. Vote yes on a resolution, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Leah Odette.
Hi, good evening. I'm Leah Odette. I'm a current parent and Poly alum. I emailed all of you about a topic I'm going to speak about, but I only got responses from two of you, so I hope this will bring this to your attention. When the Board passed a rule that requires all LBUSD students to take four years of high school math, it did so with presumably unintended consequences. My child is in 8th grade and is a high-achieving student, but she has a math learning disability as well as other disabilities. As we started to think about the high school choice process, it came to my attention that she would be required to take four years of high school math. For a childlike mind, this is inconceivable. To maintain her current B- in math, we have hired a private tutor twice a week. She attends after-school Math Hub one to two times per week, and she is supported by her amazing RSP teacher. Even with all the support, I have been greeted by tears more times than I can remember at pickup. Her math disability makes math torture. Because she spends three to four days per week after school on math support, she has been unable to be involved in other after-school activities. Her activity is math. So when I found out that LBUSD requires four years of high school math, in contrast to many districts with a high rate of student achievement and a four-year university attendance, I immediately started to think about how we might need to move out of district so she can send us, go to a school with a different requirement. I spoke to various people in LBUSD, and they all let me know there is no waiver for this requirement for children with disabilities. Based on my conversations with district staff, LBUSD will require my daughter to take four years of math and let her fail, and then they will give her a waiver so that she graduates. Ds and Fs would make her ineligible for UC. Nothing about this makes sense. The whole idea that this requirement makes all kids four-year university-eligible is completely void if a child can't get Cs. And plenty of schools send students to four-year colleges with a three-year math requirement. This policy pays lip service to setting high standards, but does not put in the resources to help students achieve them. Instead, it harms their college prospects. I am shocked that a district that speaks about equity constantly wouldn't have a waiver for a disabled child. There is nothing equitable about this. My daughter will attend a four-year university because she is smart and driven, but this four-year math requirement that doesn't offer a waiver will cause unnecessary distress and could restrict her options. It also limits her ability to take classes that interest her and make her a stronger college applicant. I don't think the Board voted for this rule, I don't think the Board that voted for this rule meant for disabled children to be impacted in this way, so I ask you to put a waiver in place for children with disabilities and be the model of equity that LBUSD says it is. And I hope to hear back from you on all of this. You all have my email. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pete Marsh.
Whoops, don't slide off the phone. Good evening, Madam President, Board, Staff. Pete Marsh, I'm in Vice President Otto's district. I'm the proud papa to two long-fellowed lions, in second in kindergarten and one in the pipeline. I came tonight to thank and congratulate the Board on, just a little after the one-year anniversary of the Green School Operations Policy that you signed last August 17. And wanted to let you know, I'm the co-lead for the National Electrification Team for Citizens Climate Lobby, and our electrification team is working with our National Youth Action Team, which is trying to get student groups around the country to do similar things to what your Green Schools campaign here did so successfully and wonderfully. And so we have, they tell me we have 10,500 school districts in our 3,420 counties, so there's a lot of work to do. But this late summer, we hosted a national... we hosted a national webinar for our members in around 500 chapters around the country talking about school electrification along with electrifying the rest of our buildings and cities. And we were excited and delighted to have Ruthie Heiss from this Green Schools Campaign be one of our presenters along with student teams from Madison, Wisconsin, from Tucson, Arizona, and Tahoe Truckee. And we also talked about great policies that you heard about from Portland, Oregon, others we may not have -- well, and also Los Angeles, Denver. New York is doing a bunch of things. So you're in the lead. You signed this policy at a great time because the day before, President Biden had signed into effect the Inflation Reduction Act, which has substantial subsidies to capitalize the equipment. The wisdom of the way that this policy was written is it says -- it doesn't say vaguely, "Well, we'll set a goal." It says, "As the fossil fuel machines in our school district reach their end of life or their scheduled end of service, we will replace them with electric machines." And all of a sudden, instead of being vague and uncertain, that gives a lot of clarity about, "Oh gee, we already have a recapitalization cycle and some great facilities managers and business managers running it." And so it helps make the whole thing manageable and visible and understandable. Anyway, thank you again and really appreciate what you did.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have reports on superintendent advisory groups. So that the public understands, the superintendent has created four groups, including one or two board members for each group, that meets with staff once before each of our board meetings so that we, as board members, can discuss together and advise Dr. Baker of any relevant discussions that arise during these group meetings. So we will start with the business budget and policy development. Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just like to share with our colleagues here that we will have three new board policies for our consideration coming to us for our December meeting. So I'll quickly review each of them. The first is actually one that we pulled from our previous meeting. It's a School Nutrition Programs Policy, Board Policy 3553. We pulled it because there were some minor edits. I'll quote, Viva, some typos. Where are you at, Viva? That needed to be fixed. So no substantial changes. There were just some typos and minor edits. And so we'll get that again for our December meeting. Two additional policies. Board Policy 3516, Emergencies and Disaster Preparedness Plan. So we have an operational plan in the district. It's actually part of the plan that we used when we went into remote learning during the pandemic. So this policy codifies our emergency and disaster preparedness plan through a board policy. So we didn't have an actual board policy. And most of the language is language from California School Board Association's sample policy language. So that will be up for our consideration for our December meeting. And then a new proposed policy, Board Policy 3541.2, which is regarding transportation with students with disabilities. As all of us know, we're required to have a plan to transport our students with disabilities. So again, this policy would qualify -- codify our current practice for transporting our students with disabilities. So I'm looking forward to our potential discussions about these policies at our December meeting. That's all for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Instruction and Student Learning. Ms. Lopez.
Yes, so we discussed ELOP funding, PTA donations, and ELD training. So a number of contracts are listed in tonight's agenda that will provide after-school enrichment for students using ELOP funds. We also noticed that there's a few schools, a couple of schools, that have large donations from their PTAs: Naples, Nucum, and Prisk. Naples PTA raised $87,000 for their school. Prisk raised $68,926. And Nucum, $31,000. So I just have to say, great job, PTA parents. And then ELD training. Teachers are currently being trained on integrated ELD through the QCI Training. And all elementary teachers and secondary ELA teachers are also receiving a second day of designated ELD training. And that's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Workforce Development. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we talked about a number of things. We actually have really great news centered around our Administrative Service Credentialing Program. So we had over 110 potential participants interested in this program. For those that don't know, that is our credentialing program that we have here at the Long Beach Unified School District. We're one of three districts that have their own in-house credentialing program. So we're pretty -- that's a pretty awesome prestigious honor to have. All things considered, we are in the process of obviously weeding through those participants as there are essentially 25 slots available within that program. Also, and this is the more important news, it's recruitment time. I felt like anybody watched The Mighty Morphin Power Rangers and was like, "It's Morphin time?" Yeah, it's recruitment time for the Long Beach Unified School District. And so we have a recruitment fair coming up on February 8th. It's going to be at Cabrillo High School. That's an important one for us. As we talked about our graduate portrait and our adult portrait, this is our opportunity to not only share with our local community on who we want to help facilitate the growth of our students, but really execute the -- really provide the groundwork for which they come onboard to our district. And so I'm looking forward to working with the team for our big recruitment event on February 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I personally don't remember Morphin time, but I have children that remember Morphin time.
It's Morphin time!
Okay. Let's see. We have Student Outcome Focus Governance. Do we have a report?
Yes, briefly. You will recall at our last meeting, we adopted goals and guardrails after listening and assessing what it was that our community wanted us to do. And now we are on to progress monitoring, and that is being worked on by senior staff. And we expect to have a report back to us by either the second meeting in December or the first meeting in January. We're very excited about that. Melding or bringing together what our community wanted as reflected in our goals and guardrails. And now seeing how we're going to monitor that and to monitor the progress that we're making. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our Consent Calendar. This Consent Calendar groups the approval of routine agenda items into one action for efficiency and to allow the board to focus our meetings on more on student outcomes and other key issues. So...
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
For item 14.7, could we have Mr. Miranda provide some background as to this five-year report and developer fee item?
We can, and he is ready.
Thank you so much, and good evening. So this particular report is an annual report. I know it's titled Annual and Five-Year Report because that's really what statute calls for. Yet you will see me up here every single year around this timeframe. The report basically summarizes a number of different factors. What our ending balance was with respect to developer fee collection last fiscal year, what our incoming revenue was via developer fee throughout the life of the year, and then where our ending balance sits. We also are required to specify which projects we associated those specific fees to. For the last fiscal year, it was primarily the Avalon Modernization and HVAC project. And also required to identify which projects we project to assign developer fees to for the next fiscal year. And in that particular case, we've identified Emerson and Gompers. The neat part there for us is not only do we have those needs to fund those project improvements, the developer fee collection allows us to leverage our bond dollars and account for different things, right? And perhaps identify different projects we can fund with the bond, which is just an asset to our community as a whole. So education code, government code, they require us to do every one of those things and package them up into an annual report, present that to the board, share it with the public. We've posted the information in the report via our developer fees website, which is off of our facilities website. And we've also made the report public via libraries and via our front office.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Mine's not about 14.7, but it is under the construction realm. I want to talk a little bit about 14.6 and the leaseback -- lease, leaseback construction services over at Washington. So that was a pretty substantial contract. Can you speak a little bit to that?
Yes, substantial amendment that Mr. Miller is pointing to. So the Washington project has us very excited. We're also catching up on the paperwork and contract front, and that's where these particular amendments come forward. So with respect to our builder amendment, it is a substantial increase, yet I need to take us back several years. So our original contract with our builder for the Washington Improvement Project dates back to 2018. So at that point in time, the Washington project was not what it is today. That Washington project in 2018, Measure E-funded project, very much in line with our traditional Measure E scope for HVAC installs and modernizations. So of course, in projecting to install a new HVAC system on Washington Middle School, which does not have one, embarking on other improvements such as accessibility, code compliance, finishes, and things of that sort, right? The traditional scope. So that project was priced out. We had a contract with Erickson Hall as our builder. They were in pre-construction services stage, at which point that project was put on pause for several years, fast-forwarding us to where we are today with an accelerated Measure E schedule, implementation plan for Measure Q, the passage of Measure Q, and really us recognizing that that community and that particular school warrants a whole lot more than our traditional modernization and HVAC scope. So we've identified and presented to the board what we're calling Washington's Transformation Project. That's what this contract amendment does. It puts us in line with Erickson Hall as our continued builder to perform and produce and staff up this project in its new form. Of course, it's a much larger project these days.
To say the least.
Yes.
Yeah, it's exciting, though.
Yes. And really, for the public's benefit, demolition of several buildings, reconstruction of several buildings, maximizing green space and open space on this highly dense campus. So just addressing a number of issues.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez, did you have a -- Okay, did you have a question about something else on the consent calendar?
I do. And I have two questions. On item four, so you have two items, contract for $525,000 to provide substitute teachers for students with exceptional needs. My question is, are we in need of substitutes? And then what training do these substitutes bring in working -- for working with our students?
Thank you, Board Member Lopez. These substitutes are for our CDC teachers who are working directly with our collaborative co-teaching, our CCT program. And so in short, CDC requirements are very strict to where teachers or even substitutes have to be trained according to their licensing. And so in this case, we're using agency substitutes who could be trained, who can serve as roving subs in case there's a teacher out, and someone can be pulled in who is already trained based on the licensing requirements.
Thank you. I also have a question on item number 25. We continue to contract with transportation companies, specifically bus companies. And this $750,000 contract with several companies for three years is in addition to the contracts we've already approved. And so I have a -- my question is, how many bus drivers do we currently have? And why are we continuing to hire bus companies? But I guess more specifically, how many drivers do we have? Because we are, you know, our contracts are pretty extensive with bus companies.
Thank you. Yeah, so the contracts in front of you today are for special services that school sites request us for transportation. Those typically come into extracurricular activities. These are for bus companies to provide some of our sports teams, the movement that we need to go to school sites, some of our performing arts crews, and our different students that need transportation around, as well as field trips and additional extended learning opportunities that we have at school sites. All of those require us to have vendors on call so as school sites schedule those field trips, those extracurricular activities that we have bus drivers available. These are estimated amounts of $750,000. Well, you know, we kind of work with the school sites as the services are needed to schedule those. As far as asking the question, how many bus drivers do we have? The district currently does not employ any bus drivers. We exclusively contract out our transportation services to transportation providers in the industry.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any further questions on the consent calendar? In that case, I'll have our board secretary take a roll call vote. We -- I believe we did have a --
Yes.
Yes.
We do. Okay. President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
And Member Otto?
Aye.
Student-member preferential vote?
Aye.
Okay, that passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have new business. Item 15.1, Approval of Initial Bargaining Proposals from the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 2, Unit A to Long Beach Unified School District.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Question. The language in regards to premium cost, it's changing to sharing of the cost-sharing. And so what in this essentially mean a cut for our employees? Salary cut there?
So within the context of the contract, there is a stipulation, what we refer to as our district annual maximum. And so what we do each year is we add 3.5% to that total premium cost that the district will put forth. And we are at the stage where we believe in approximately two years that we will reach that district annual maximum. And so really, what the language is, is not adding anything additional into the contract. It's just making sure that we're clear with our labor partner, CSEA, that we're on the same page and everybody understands that language clearly.
Thank you. Any other questions on 15.1? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. And I forgot, on our previous one, for our student representative with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Axel. Next, we have item 15.2, Approval of Initial Bargaining Proposals from the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 2, Unit B to Long Beach Unified School District.
Move for approval?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And our student board member with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, so that passes unanimously. Item 15.3, Approval of Initial Bargaining Proposals from Long Beach Unified School District to the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 2, Unit A and B.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our student representative? I mean, our student board member?
Aye.
With a preferential vote? That also passes unanimously. Item 15.4, approval of pre-qualified environmental services consultants.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I know that items .4, .5, .6, and .7 are separate item. Could we get some background on these pre-qualification, approval of pre-qualified consultants?
Mr. Miranda's coming forward, so I think that's a yes.
You sure can. So two weeks ago, as we, before the boarding, we addressed professional service pools for different services. I think at that point in time, I promised I'd be back with several more, and here we are with four different services, right? So again, with a building program our size, we have the need for several different professional service types across different facets of our industry. For this evening, these four particular items would allow us to solidify a bench of firms that provide environmental services, geotechnical services, hazmat services, and surveying services. Really for the good of the community and the public, highly competitive process. It's really cool for us to see that there are several firms that want to do work with us. There's definitely a buzz around our building program, and that's to the benefit of our projects in our district, of course. So what we have this evening is the result of this highly competitive process, right? We put out these RFQs, requests for qualifications. We solicit them far and wide. We put the information out there with respect to interested parties doing work with us. We rate the proposals via just a very transparent process as well, ultimately landing on pre-qualified pools that allow us to expedite work and keep work moving forward at a fast pace, right? Also allows us to do work with just high-performing firms across every one of these disciplines. Our interest and our intent is to refresh these pre-qualified service pools every three years or so. We know things change within the industry. Sometimes folks go from one firm to another, and things could change in that regard. So just keeping our doors open to be able to refresh these particular pools of service providers every three years is likely the sweet spot. You've probably taken notice that there's different bench sizes for each one of these different items. That's after careful consideration of us wanting to have this desire to have a deep enough bench, right, of quality performers, but also enough work to go around. Because we know and we've seen in the past where sometimes we have this massive bench, but these firms don't land work for a year, or two, or four, or five, right? So that's also our desire and intent. We compete with these firms or have these firms compete at two different levels. So this is what I would call level one, where they're competing to land on a bench of firms that perform this service. Then as the projects come to fruition and come to development, and they come to a point in time we need their service, we issue RFPs, requests for proposals, where they compete at a second level, right? At that point in time, we're in a win-win scenario as a district, because we're going to land with a firm who does great work. But at that point in time, we're looking at price, specific project team, local hire factors, just a host of different opportunities and metrics that we use at that point in time. So different services, all specialized, all a little unique in their nature, but all services we need to have safe, quality projects.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Otto?
Another question or comment. At the last meeting, I spent considerable time before the meeting and during the meeting understanding the process that we go through, which in my opinion was very impressive for all the reasons that Mr. Miranda said, but also because what we do is, we not only make sure that the people that seek pre-qualification are likely to get some work over that three-year period or whatever it is, but we are, it's a very fair process. It's blindly done so that when decisions are made, they're made based on qualifications and rules out the political parts of those things. So I'm very happy with how we do this.
Thank you. Okay, so without further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our student board representative with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Item 15.5, approval of pre-qualified geotechnical consultants.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our student board member with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Item 15.6, approval of pre-qualified hazmat consultants.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our student board member with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. We are now at report of board members, and so Axel, we'll start with you.
Did we do seven?
I am excited to announce that the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee...
We didn't do seven.
Okay, there seems to be a buzz, and it's because I made a mistake. So...
Move approval? Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So I apologize. Apparently, I crossed off number seven without actually doing that, and so we have to do 15.7. So we're going to go back in time and pretend like I didn't do that. Okay. Item 15.7, approval of pre-qualified site surveying consultants, and my apologies again.
There was a stir in the room.
There was a stir. It was quite something.
It rose up.
Yeah.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our student board member with a preferential vote? Thank you. And that also passes unanimously. I'm going to cross that off twice because I did it the other time. Okay, we are actually now at board reports, and we're going to start with you.
All right. So I am excited to announce that the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee, RSVP, Raising Student Voices and Participation, had their first meeting Thursday last week, and this group consists of 43 members from all Long Beach Unified School District high schools. This committee's purpose is to elevate student voice and student experience to inform school and district decision-making. We also talked about the fall poll survey, in which we saw a small increase in favorable responses from last spring. We also talked about the graduate portrait in breakout rooms, and RSVP members got to understand what the qualities of an LBUSD graduate means. Thank you.
Thank you, Axel. Mr. Miller?
Great. Well, first off, I want to thank you guys for having some understanding, as I obviously attended the first half of our board meeting, but was feeling a little under the weather. And so thank you guys for being understanding, as I departed from the second half. There's a couple of things I wanted to talk about today, try and be brief here. One was partially brought up already, but I was just so pleased and impressed with the work that David and Alan did over at Washington. I felt the need to share even more so here, as they hosted a community meeting centered around the transformation project that's going to happen at Washington. If you know anything about not only that campus, but that neighborhood, is, it is very much a tight-knit neighborhood, and also there are some tough times that happened over there in that neighborhood. And so one of the things that is encouraging about what we're going to be doing for that neighborhood is providing what I would consider a brand-new campus for a community that is very much deserving of such. One of the things that was brought up during that community meeting, both in the morning and in the evening, and I know a little bit about this because of my previous history in construction, is that construction can be a little disruptive, you know? When it comes, if you've ever done any construction project, you know, there's a, from a smaller standpoint, if you've done something at home, there's dust, and you got to move all the stuff out of the kitchen or the bathroom, and there's a time period where you can't use that space. And anecdotally, it's very similar to what's going to be happening over at Washington, where there's this large campus that is used by thousands of students, and for a time period of, look, in about three years, we're going to have to take a number of families, have them temporarily using the Mary Butler facility, and during that time period, there's going to be some community meetings that won't be able to be hosted at Washington because of the construction. So there's going to be, like I said earlier, some components of this project that are going to be disruptive. But the part, the reason why I bring this up, because I was so appreciative of both the district's and the campus's interest in wanting to make sure that not only was that disruption that's going to be created from the construction at least heard, but trying to find ways that we can address some of those issues on the front end before we actually get to some of the construction that's going to obviously have an impact on those communities and those neighborhoods. And so I was just very much appreciative of you all taking the time, the concern, and the effort to listen to those community members, as I believe that that's an important one as we continue to go in this process of supporting our students and making sure that they have the best facility for learning as possible. So I just wanted to give you a big kudos on that, and thank you all for your efforts. Next, I wanted to give another big shout-out to my CAC folks and the CAC meetings that I've been attending recently, thanks to the team and Dr. Simon, as we continue to work and support our students with special needs. These meetings are becoming, for me personally, as a dad with a child with special needs, helpful in the sense that it helps create a community, and it also is providing little small skill sets to be able to support both my daughter, but more importantly, my family. And so as I think about this space and the benefit that I'm getting from it personally, I'd be remiss if I didn't put a marketing ploy and throw it, throw it out there that more families attend. I know that it's a, it's a tricky time. I think most of the meetings are happening at 5 o'clock. I mean, yeah, 6 o'clock, and so it's a tricky time to be able to attend. But these small nuggets of how to read an IEP, or to how, at the last meeting, it was how do we support our, our students with dyslexia? These small nuggets are just becoming so important to me in preparing on how I can support my child. I would be remiss if I didn't share these nuggets with other families that may have some of those same concerns or questions or curiosities. And so I wanted to make sure that I uplifted the great work that's going there, going on there, and thank you, Dr. Simon, for your great work going on. Last, but certainly not least, is holiday season is coming up, and Lord knows, it's my favorite time of year. It really starts with Halloween, where I get to overdo it with my candy and my sugar, and then I get to hop into Thanksgiving and eat way more than I probably should. But more importantly for me, the holidays are opportunities to spend time with my family and to be with my wife and my daughter and my mother. And for some folks, without taking the wrong spin here, that's not the case. There are some people that lost someone this year, or maybe last year, and may not have that opportunity to spend that quality time that the holidays provide. All things considered, sometimes you don't even have the resources to be able to afford that Halloween costume, or those Christmas presents, or that Thanksgiving. And so I often try to participate in a number of programs to help support those people and those families, and I have been very, very fortunate to be able to work with a number of folks in my district in particular, who are hosting a Thanksgiving event, a very large Thanksgiving event over at Martin Luther King Park on, that is November 19th. And so I wanted to thank the Six. There's a number of folks who are involved with the Six, and a gentleman named Sanai and Marcus Hobbs. But all things considered, this event, they'll be giving away hundreds of turkeys, hundreds of meals, hundreds of, folks will be in attendance, but more importantly, it's another opportunity to fellowship and convene and celebrate the holidays. And I would hope that those that may not have the resources, or may not have folks to celebrate with, can be in attendance. And you can sign up at thesixfoodgiveaway event, Eventbrite.com. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, President Craighead. So three items for me to report on, in the spirit of giving during the holiday season that Mr. Miller just shared. So we'll be having our fourth annual Turkey Dinner giveaway at the Museum of Latin American Art next Tuesday. We need volunteers, so if you want to come help us pass out full Thanksgiving dinners, show up at 8:39 in the morning, we'll start giving away the Thanksgiving dinners at, starting at 10:00 a.m. at the Museum of Latin American Art parking lot, and that's in collaboration with a dozen other community partners that have been doing this now. This will be the fourth year. So good times in community building there, Mr. Miller. Also wanted to share that I will be an invited speaker at November's Best Art Central Long Beach Community Partnership, Partnership Meeting. That's on November 30th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at First Congregation Church in downtown. If anyone wants to join, great work going on on behalf of our youngest children and students. And lastly, Mr. Miller and I, and Dr. Baker, members of the executive team and staff, participated in a symbolic signing of the Long Beach Housing Promise last week, led by and under the vision of Mayor Richardson, in collaboration with LBUSD, CSULB, and LBCC, with the focus on a collaborative commitment to make housing and security, particularly for our students, our biggest priority as a collective with our three educational systems and our city. And really, it's students and families, whether they be those students that have been sleeping in their cars at LBCC, those students in our own district that are couch surfing, those students at Cal State Long Beach that don't have a place to even heat a cup of noodle, soup. So even though it's a symbolic signing, really it gives us the opportunity to very strategically prioritize this on behalf of our students and families, and dig into the hard work that it's going to take to eliminate housing insecurity for everyone, but particularly for our students and families in Long Beach. So big props to President Connolly, President Muñoz, Superintendent Baker, and Mayor Richardson. So Mr. Miller and I were both there in support of that, in addition to our executive team and staff.
Thank you. Mr. Otto?
I've also had a busy last couple of weeks in my district. I had a meeting at Wilson High School last week where what we, what we talked about was kind of doing the same thing that Superintendent Baker is doing with her district-wide student meeting, doing the same kind of thing at Wilson. We're in the exploratory stage of that, but we're very excited about opportunities for experiencing student voice, and that's what we're looking for there. Secondly, I went to Soto again, and I'm so impressed with what they do at Soto and this project Lead the Way approach to education that is very transformational, I think, and the principal there, Ronnie Coleman, said, yeah, you can go into any period, that's a free period for students, and they're not worried about the bathrooms, they're not worried about what's going on. They're doing things on the projects that they're working on, and it's very exciting to see that. I spent considerable time the other day at Tincher, which is a middle school, and what caught my attention about the reports about construction in this meeting was that, I said, gee, you're a K, K, six-through-eight school, and you're about to be, do the HVAC stuff, and that's going to be hard on you, isn't it? And they said, no, no, we've worked this all out. We don't have to move. Excuse me, we're going to be able to stay here because of the arrangements that we've made, and it's just another example of how well our, our construction teams work to serve the least problems that there can be on, on our students, so that no... serve the least problems that there can be on, on our students, so that nobody's going to have to move to other schools. And they've worked this out very thoughtfully, and I was very, very impressed with that. Next week, at the end of the week, I go as a delegate from this area to the California School Boards Association Conference for, for two days. We're going over agendas to see what it is that we possibly can do, and it's a job that I take very seriously, and I'm looking forward to that, although be back, glad to be back here in Long Beach. So that's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
I'll be brief this evening. I attended the Choice Fair at Cabrillo High School, and I do want to commend the educators and the students who spent their Saturday speaking with prospective high school students. You all made Choice Fair possible. I also want to give a shout-out to Long Beach Police Football Team for a great game last Friday against Irvine High. And although the outcome was not what we anticipated, please know players that we're very proud of you. You were the only high school in Long Beach that made it, or the district, rather, not in Long Beach, but in the district, that made it to playoffs, and you fought hard. You represented the district well, and we could not be prouder. Hats off to you, to the coaches, the principal, and the activities director. Thank you for supporting our football players during their journey, and your dedication and commitment is appreciated. And just talking about commitment and dedication, our pathway counselors, they go above and beyond their scope of work to help our students. While studies show that the student-to-counselor ratio works best at a 250 to 1, counselors in our district go well beyond that figure. In some cases, our counselors have over 500 students in their caseload, and they still manage to conduct LPAC, SBAC, CAST, PSAT, and SAT exams. They also attend 504 meetings, IEP meetings, they administer AP exams, they monitor student attendance, and have supervision duties. But most importantly, they meet with students to help them select classes and address their needs, despite their incredibly high caseloads. Thank you, counselors, for all that you do. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see, we don't have our superintendent with us this evening. She's representing us in Nashville, so we wish her well and safe travels. Let's see, for my report, I attended a Veterans Day breakfast at Carver with my former colleague and our fifth district councilwoman, Megan Kerr.
Former school board member.
Former school board member, yes. And select students were accompanied by family members who are currently serving, or have served previously, our, our country. And it was a very multi-generational event. We had kids in the room who brought fathers, mothers, grandparents, who have served, and it was wonderful to see everybody interacting together. And there were inspirational messages of gratitude that were displayed in the room, and I just wanted to read one of them. I thought it was very nice. So one Carver student wrote, "Your hard work helps to keep me and my family safe and happy. I can't thank you enough for all you have done. Thank you for serving our country." And these are elementary school students, there were lots of messages along those lines, and I thought that was well said. For tonight, there was going to be a band spectacular, but that has been canceled because of the rain, so I wanted to mention that. Also, there is a Sancofa parent event at Houghton Park that started at 5:30, but in case we wrap this up in the next few minutes, we might be able to stop by, or anybody else if they wanted to stop by. Let's see. That pretty much wraps up the meeting, but I know, and our next meeting will be held on December 6th. But I know, Dr. Benitez, that you had a special acknowledgement.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd ask us to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor and in memory of Liliana Gandarilla, a graduate of LBUSD, a master of social work. She had recently received her license as a clinical social worker, working at the women's shelter Childnet, and volunteering at the animal shelter. She passed tragically last week, loving daughter, sister, and she's the daughter of one of our most engaged parents, Liliana Ocampo. So, I would ask that we send our thoughts and prayers out to Liliana and her family, and, I'm sorry, Lilia and her family, and Liliana's family members and loved ones. Lilia just asked for prayers on our behalf, and Lilia's been involved for so many years in CAC, DCAC, as an engaged parent at the school site. Anytime that something's going on in LBUSD, she's usually there as an advocate, as a parent, and as a community leader. So I'd ask that we adjourn in her memory and honor. Saludos, Lilia. Un fuerte abrazo.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.